Of course it was fraud.
Our call to order this meeting of the Cowee County Board of Education Agenda 786, 6:30 PM, April 11, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So is.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Recognitions, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Public Information Officer Dean Jackson to bring us our recognitions. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Horton and Board members. We have three recognitions tonight, starting with our core business to see some of the great activities going on in our schools. Tonight, it's a presentation from White Oak Elementary School, and I'm going to call on White Oak Principal Kim Taylor to introduce.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kim Taylor, Principal of White Oak. Just a quick little tidbit about the cookies that you received tonight. They were made by one of our White Oak families, Natalia Rykovik, and her son Daniel is in second grade. They are Ukrainian refugees that came to us this year. Her husband and her son are still in Ukraine. So these cookies are made with love. In recognizing that the five-year Cowee County School System Strategic Plan emphasizes equitable opportunities for students to master rigorous content standards, we at White Oak have identified high-impact reading strategies as a point of emphasis in our school improvement plan for the 2022-23 school year. As part of our focus in this area, we are studying heartword strategy in kindergarten. Ms. Sunny Milliken, one of our kindergarten teachers, is here with four of her students this evening to share an example lesson of the work that our students are doing and show how it supports them in reading, writing, and with mastering their sight words. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Sunny Milliken and her students, Hutch Dyer, Nathaniel Revere, Jeremiah Parks, and Kinley Pack.
Good evening. I'm Sunny Milliken. I am a kindergarten teacher at White Oak Elementary. Recognizing the importance of students being able to decode, to read, and spell in kindergarten, we are focusing on heartwords this year. In order to master one of our standards in ELA, I provided the following learning activity for my students, the Heart Words Decoding Method. The purpose of this method is for students to learn spellings of irregularly spelled words in text. One of our kindergarten standards for phonics and word recognition states that for students to know and apply grade-level phonics and word analysis skills in decoding words. The goal of the Heart Words Decoding Method is to provide students with a strategy that helps them to recognize irregular spelling patterns in words, and furthermore, to provide them with tools to be able to decode them in an effort to boost reading and spelling skills. Yeah, next slide. You can do the next slide. Thank you. Sorry. One common misconception is that sight words are equivalent to high-frequency words, but that is not the case. High-frequency words make up to 50 to 80% of the text that our students see on a daily basis. There are two types of high-frequency words, regularly spelled and irregularly spelled. Regularly spelled high-frequency words refer to the words that follow phonics rules. For example, the word "off." Until students know the double consonant rule, then the word "off" would be considered a heartword. However, once students are taught that rule, then "off" would no longer be considered a heartword. The other type of high-frequency words are their irregularly spelled words. These words do not follow phonics rules, making them permanent heartwords because students must know the tricky parts by heart since they are not spelled the way that they sound. The tricky parts of these words must be explicitly taught and learned by heart by our students. Next slide. Regularly spelled high-frequency words are also known as flashwords, meaning they are decodable or that they are spelled the way that they sound. Next slide. The main purpose of the Heart Word Decoding Method is to help students learn irregularly-spelled high-frequency words by decoding the parts of the word that can be sounded out and remembering in their heart the irregular parts of the word. For our activity this evening, we will be using the activity sheet pictured to help us with our decoding method. We will also be using the manipulatives pictured to help us along the way. Before we begin, students, can one of you please tell us what the heart part of a word is?
The tricky part.
Yeah, the tricky part. Very good. Okay, can one of you tell us what makes certain parts of a word tricky? Yes, nothing what it's supposed to say. Very good. All right. At this time, my students and I would like to demonstrate what this method looks like. All right, guys ready? Your word is "of." Say it. Very good. Please tap out those sounds in "of." Very good. How many sounds did you hear? Very good. Can you tap them on your soundboxes? Very good. Grab your poppets for me. Can you please pop the word "of" for us? Very good. How many did we pop? Grab your counters. Please map the word "of" for us. Very good. All right, grab your markers. All right, can you graph the word "of" for us and put the hearts above the heart parts? Very good. Very good. Okay, Nate, can you tell us why the "o" in "of" is a heart part? Yeah, it's making the short "e" sound, and it's actually an "o," right? Good. Kinley, can you tell us why "f" is the heart part? Because it's making the "v" sound. Very good. So we have to know in our hearts that "of" is not spelled "uv," it's spelled "how." How is it spelled? Yeah, there you go, Jeremiah. Good job. Can you spell the word "of" for me, please? Very good. And then everybody read us the word one more time. Very good, boys and girls. We have one more, but we were going to invite some of you down if you wanted to see, watch them do it. I wasn't sure if we... Sorry. All right, are you guys ready? Have your stuff ready? All right. Your word is "said." Say it. Very good. Please tap the sounds in "said." Very good. How many sounds did you hear? Good. Can you tap it in your soundboxes? Very good. What two sounds in the word "said" sound like they're supposed to? Yes, and it, S and D. Very good. Okay, can you get your poppets for me? Can you pop the word "said" for us, please? Very good. How many did you pop? Good. Grab your counters for us. Please map the word "said" for us. Very good. All right, grab your markers. It's okay, Kinley. Can you graph the word "said" for us and then place a heart above the heart part? Very good. Jeremiah, why is "ai" the heart part of this word? Yeah, because it's making the short "e" sound, right? But it's not a "e," it's a what? "ai." Yep, we got to remember that in our hearts. Good job. All right, can you please spell the word "said" for us? Very good. And everybody read us our word one more time. Very good, boys and girls. Good job. Thank you. Thank you so much. Good job, boys and girls. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
That was an amazing presentation. Reading is such, so essential today, and I've learned something. I love that. I love that. Coach, I love... You're doing good, Coach.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Thank you, Ms. Milliken. Guys, that was a great lesson. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. For our next recognition tonight, we have the 2023 All-State Band Students selected from Cowee County's bands, all three of our high schools in this case, and much like the All-State Chorus Students that we had and recognized last month, these are certifiably some of the very best student instrumental musicians in the state of Georgia. So we're really proud of what they were able to accomplish. That is a very difficult, very rigorous application process. We have all three band directors from our high schools and our principals, and I'm going to ask that our principals introduce band directors, who will then introduce our All-State Band Students. We'll start with Northgate Principal Ashley Wilks to introduce her band director.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Ashley Wilks. I'm the principal at Northgate High School, and I'm honored to be joined tonight by Mr. Chris Sink, who's our assistant band director.
Hey, everyone. Sorry. I'd like to recognize Noah Watson. He made the All-State Band on flute, and he is a junior. This is Noah. He's our one All-State member from Northgate, so... This is the second time he's made All-State in high school, so...
Next, Newton High School, Principal Chase Bucket to introduce.
I'm a little intimidated by the White Oak student, so y'all forgive me. Great job. It is my privilege to celebrate a phenomenal student and a band director. Even though he's teaching out of a temporary location, he makes sure our students know that music and band is not a temporary endeavor. Y'all, please welcome Mr. Dr. Josh Boyd, phenomenal band director.
Hey, it's my pleasure to introduce just an amazing student. It's tried out every year. It's his senior year, and he made it, and we're so excited for him. It's just a great story. I'm not giving up. Please welcome up to the front, Mr. Carson Coker.
And we also have students from East Cowee High School here tonight, and I'd like to call on Principal Steve Allen to introduce.
I'd like to call on our band director. It's awesome to be in this place where we have nationally renowned students that's done great things, and we'll see it in another program here in a minute. But let me just introduce Robert Owens.
Thank you, guys, for recognizing these students. First of all, on behalf of all the students that are here, there are multiple thousand students that audition across the state for All-State each year, and there's two rounds. The first round, an unlimited can pass if they can meet the certain requirements that they have to pass to do that. Then they go to the second round. The second round, there are about 400 that make it out of about 3,000 that start the process, and there's 1,800 that make it to the second round. So these students have definitely made it to the top of the state, and Georgia's a very competitive band state as well. So I would like to introduce some students down here who have also done a good job. We have Matty Adams. If you would come down front, Matty. Matty plays flute at East Cowee, and we also have Annabeth Schaefer, who plays oboe. And then Bonesok Kane is a clarinet player. Jace Park, percussionist. And Cole Kirkland is a saxophone player. One thing that is, a lot of people don't realize is this isn't a year that they do this. This is multi-years work. These students start in sixth grade, taking private lessons continually throughout their years, and some of them, it's their junior or senior year before they finally are able to make it. So it's not like a one-year goal or effort. Some of these guys have been working at it for five or six years and finally achieved it. So all of them deserve great. Congratulations for this honor.
Band directors, if y'all wouldn't mind, join your students to their right, my left, right down Bay of Stow, and I want to get a picture of everybody together if I could. You want to have it move forward?
Yeah, y'all can take a step forward and get close together.
Kind of move forward.
Act like you like each other. Keep on squeezing in a little bit.
All right, keep on squeezing in a little bit. All right. All right, and everybody look at me.
Did you get one real quick? Oh, I have to keep on going back. There we go. Congratulations. I'm going to ask Principal Allen to stay down here because we have one more recognition tonight. That's also in East Calhouta, East Calhouta High School Marine Corps JRO TC Rifle Team, who just a few weeks ago, I believe, placed in a national service, all-service national championship. And then, just a little over a week ago, also placed in a state championship. So I'd like to turn it over to Principal Allen to introduce.
Well, I get the privilege every day to work with a guy, Major Pete Merrill, who is, works tirelessly with his cadets. He has changed so many lives in a positive direction. These kids absolutely love him. He, he has reached heights with these kids and gone places where no other high schools have gone. And as he says, "Ah, I'm just doing my job, chief. I'm just doing my job." So I'd like for, please give a big round of applause to Major Pete Merrill. He's gonna introduce his student.
Yeah, thank you very much for having us here tonight. I appreciate Mr. Allen and the board members inviting us here tonight. I certainly would have known enough to ask. So thank you for allowing us this opportunity, cuz I think it is very important. Up at East Calhouta, we do rifle. We do it on two levels. We do it at the Georgia High School level. It's a varsity sport in Georgia, of course. And then we also shoot on the JRO TC level. This is nine months a year, probably 12, and it is painful. A lot of these kids start shooting as soon as they join ROTC. Unlike some sports, this is not a lifelong journey. They pick it up in ninth grade, maybe 10. We attach a fire hose and we go. These kids have dealt with frustrations, and rifle is about many failures contained by a few victories. This past couple weeks, the kids went up to Ohio. We have what's called the JRO TC All-Service. That starts in, that starts in November. That's the first cutoff. When it starts, there's about 252 teams that start, about 6,000 shooters overall, both team and individuals. The next, about two-thirds of those people get cut, and we go into what's called the service matches. You go on to Alabama, and you shoot at the Marine Corps level, the Army level, all the service levels. The top five from each service then goes to Ohio. So the top 25 teams throughout the nation. This past year, I think there were 42 states represented at the national tournament, along with a team from Germany and a team from Japan. What I like about the JRO TCs is it's three days long. You have a practice, and then you come in and you have day one of shooting, and then you have to come back and do it again. Shooting well one day is not terribly difficult. Shooting well two days is impossible. And the funny thing is, I'm there, and you'll see instructors limping around from their times in Iraq and Afghanistan, and they will tell you that they've never been more nervous than they had in that hour and a half each day it takes to shoot 60 rounds. When they, these kids shoot at this level, one shot is the difference between first and sixth. So I'm glad my kids were not smart enough to look at the scores at the end of day one. All right, they just go home, they go back to the hotel and sleep. All right, and then day two, I don't think they even knew how they were doing, and then at the end of it, they were able to take second. One thing that makes me very proud, we went into last position on day two, tied for second with four other teams. I'm like, do I mention it to them? Do I say something to them? Do I fake a heart attack? What do I do? This is, and I didn't say anything. And like, this team has been able to do all year long, they stepped up. We didn't win the state championships. We weren't national championships. But what I can say about this team is they never shot bad. And I just, I just can't tell you, I've been involved with competitive sports my whole life, I've been on many deployments, and I probably think there's nothing like the grind, maybe band, that goes into a rifle season. I think chemistry's overrated. These are, these are a bunch of kids that get together, they're freshman years, they don't know anybody. Most of these kids would have never been friends if it wasn't for rifle. You learn it is about the process. You learn it is about each other. You help each other when you fail, and you do this together. I'll be honest, I didn't really wanna go to Ohio. I've been there enough. But by the time you get with these guys at the airport, it's just, there's a lot of good kids out there. There's a lot of good kids. These kids came back, the hardest match of the year is state finals. These kids got back from Ohio on Sunday, they took Monday off. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we trained, and then Friday, they were back up the University of North Georgia, what I think is the hardest match of the year. And these guys took third place, didn't have a great day, but again, they didn't lose it. And that's all I told them. Don't get in the way of the other teams when they're in the process of beating themselves. You know, most of the time, you're only really competing with yourselves. So I know I'm very thankful to the support we get throughout, throughout the administration and throughout, but more than anything, I appreciate these kids and buying into a process, and I'm not quite sure I would have bought into in my ninth grade year. These guys go to matches people don't even exist. You know, not a lot of people are like, hey, how'd that rifle team do? All right, but every day, they go, they do it, and they do, they do great work. So what I would like to do is very quickly ask each one, I'll go ahead and ask you to come up here and post yourself along the line, and just very quickly introduce each one. The first one I would like to introduce is Teddy Serrano. Teddy is one of our senior co-captains. He's been a four-year member of the rifle team. He is a two-time All-State member, which is a top 10 shooter in the state. Now, rifle doesn't have first-team, second-team honorable mention. It's just top 10, you're in it or you're not. All right, and he's probably, for two years in a row, he's been a top 10 shooter out of about 600 shooters throughout the state. Teddy was the number-one finisher at the Junior ROTC Nationals that I just referred to. Many of these shooters are going on to shoot on Division I scholarships. Many of these, some of these shooters will probably shoot at least into the Olympic trials. I think Teddy is done shooting. All right, he will be attending the United States Naval Academy, something far more important. The next shooter I would like to introduce is my other co-captain, Brady Grimsley. Brady Grimsley is also a four-year member of the team. Nobody has outworked Brady in the four years. He, he shot all-conference this year, and last year, shot in all 10 matches, and just was one of our hardest workers. Also served as our battalion commander for this past year in JRO TC. Upon graduation, Brady will be going to University of North Georgia and the Chora Cadets. Next person I would like to introduce is Wyatt Hicks, I'm sorry, is Cassidy Violet Novoa. Cassidy is a four-year shooter on the team. She is a two-time all-conference shooter for Area 5. She personally qualified for the Marine Corps Nationals, and then she did one of the harder things to do. She qualified as an individual at the JRO TC tournament, where she shot number 60th out of the top 85 shooters in the country. Upon graduation, she will finish up her welding certificate at the West Georgia Technical, and then take that and combine it with an art degree to pursue a career in art. Next, I have junior Wyatt Hicks. Wyatt started shooting for us last year. This year, he received, he's an All-State selection for his first year. At States, he shot eighth overall, and I think was one of the only males to make the finals. So congratulations on that. At JRO TC, he qualified, he ended up 25th, I think, out of 85 shooters. Just a very accomplished shooter in a very low amount of time. One thing's of note, he will go on, I think you leave tomorrow, right? You knew that, right? Okay. He leaves tomorrow. He goes to Colorado Springs, where he'll be participating in the Junior Olympics, not just in one event, but two. He'll represent for air rifle, and he also was the top qualifying male for the state of Georgia in what we call small bar, which is 22s at 50 meters. All right, so thank you, Wyatt. Next is Destina Zario. She is a three-year shooter. This year, she, I think this is her second year she got All-Conference. I call her number 11. All right, All-State is the top 10, and she received number 11th, missed out by point, one tenth of a point. So a very accomplished shooter. The, two years, two years of the conference, been shooting three years altogether. Next, I'd like to introduce, oops, sorry. Leonardo Carcio Polo. He, he, he has the claim to fame of probably having the hardest last name of all the range officers to have to announce. Other than that, he is definitely the most improved shooter that I've had this year. Last year, I don't even think he ranked in the top 40 in our area. This year, I think he finished number six overall in the area, and also shot 40th, 40th in the nation, I'm sorry, 27th in the nation out in, out in Ohio. So thank you, Leo. Last but not least is Aubrey Hancock. Aubrey is our newest shooter. She came in on the team, moved her up. She qualified 13th out of the area, missed all area by three points, but she only had three shoots. Shot her way on to the state team, where she served as our fifth alternate shooter, but also actually came out 50th of the top 85 shooters from the state. One of the things I would like to say, this is a tough sport. You can't argue with the numbers. Some of these kids, these kids have switched in and out all year, who went to Alabama, wasn't the same team that went to Ohio, and it wasn't the same team that went to the States. Not once. When I had to make those hard decisions, I had to look at a kid that worked for four years and say, your scores aren't there. I got nothing but love and support from that kid. And I don't know if I could have replicated that at their same age. And I think that's one of the biggest things. We went to States, we shot third, a little bit of disappointment, but I really appreciate you guys being the first ones to shake the hands of all the range officers, and although maybe we lost, the amount of class that you showed in doing so. So again, just thank you for having us here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about the accomplishments of the kids in the program, and this is in addition to all the color guards that they do, the parking and everything else. So thank you very much for all you do, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for having us.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 14th, 2023?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Action items, group one, Dr. Orton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first action item I have for you in group one is to approve class size resolution. For the 23-24 school year, the maximum system class size averages are being presented for approval. These class size averages reflect the same class size maximums that we had in place for the 22-23 school year. List of the, of the class size resolution is attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the class size resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero.
Next action item I have for you in group one is to nominate and approve Calhouta County's GSBA delegate and alternate for the annual summer conference this June. Each year, the Calhouta County School System nominates a delegate and an alternate to represent the school system at the GSBA Delegate Assembly during the annual GSBA Conference in Savannah in June. The delegate will participate in approving the legislative position document during the GSBA Delegate Assembly in June 2023. If a board member wishes to bring any suggested changes for consideration by the board, it should be done by sending the requested change to those legislative positions by email to the delegate no later than April 18th of 2023. And with that, Mr. Chair, I guess we need to open up the floor for nominations.
Yep. So yeah, I'll open up the floor for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mr. Rob Dubose as our delegate and Ms. Beth Barnett as our alternate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, okay. Want a motion that we close the nominees?
So move.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Is there a motion to approve nominating Mr. Rob Dubose as the GSBA delegate and Ms. Beth Barnett as the alternate for the annual summer conference in June 2023?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero.
The next action item I have for you in group one is to approve the purchase of buses. Approval is requested for the purchase of 10 23-passenger Thomas buses with a wheelchair lift at $117,389 each for a total purchase price of $1,178,390. Approval is also requested for purchasing 5 72-passenger IC international buses at $118,725 each for a total purchase price of $593,625. Grand total for the bus purchases is $1,772,015. This purchase would be paid from a combination of state pupil transportation funds at $1,57,320 and SPOLOs funds for $714,695. These are state contract prices, and Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the purchase of buses for a total of $1,772,015. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero.
The next action item I have for you in group one is to approve a contingency change request to replace floor covering in the lower-level corridor of the gymnasium at Noonan High School. Approval is requested for contingency change request to replace the existing carpet tile and the specified new carpet tile with epoxy flooring in the corridors to the JV locker room, behind the varsity locker room, and from the varsity locker room to the new training room. Replacement of the existing floor covering was not included in the base bid scope of work for this area. This floor covering is badly soiled and in need of replacement. The new section of corridor was specified to receive the same type of carpet tile as the existing carpet tile. We feel that the epoxy flooring will be a better product for this area due to the heavy traffic in and out of locker rooms. The net cost to replace the existing flooring and upgrade the specified flooring is $19,749. The change order proposal and supporting documentation is attached. The change order proposal and supporting documentation is attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a contingency change request to replace floor covering in the lower-level corridor of the gymnasium at Noonan High School. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
All right, is there any discussion?
Dr. Horton, I have a quick question, and I may sound not very smart on this. What is epoxy flooring?
The best description I can give you is it is a solid flooring, whereas the carpet has pores all in it, the epoxy is a... Ronnie, you want to give a better description than me? Yeah. That's right. It's not...
More wearable, right?
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero.
The final action item I have for you in group one is to approve a contingency change request to add speaker supports for the Noonan High School stadium speakers. Approval is requested for a contingency change request to install supports for the stadium speaker system on the new training room roof. The original speaker system was in need of replacement, and the support for that speaker had to be removed for construction of the new gymnasium. Temporary speaker was installed on the scoreboard support structure. The new speaker system cannot be adequately supported on that structure, or engineers have designed additional support structures on the training room roof for the new system. Speakers are in the base bid. The net cost to install the additional support system is thirteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. Change order proposal and supporting documentation is attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a contingency change request to add speaker supports for N H S, Noonan High School stadium speakers. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Actually, there are no action items, group two to group three trips, Dr. Horton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one trip for you tonight that we are asking for approval retroactively. Dr. Ashley Wilks, principal at Northgate, had requested permission for the Air Force R T C to visit Washington, D.C., actually last week, so no cost to the system, no school days missed. They received an exceeds marking during their Air Force evaluation, in the running for the highest distinguished merit recognition, but needed to meet the additional requirements of field trips and volunteer hours before the end of the year. Due to the short notice that they had of the trip, I approved it between last month's board meeting and this board meeting based on policy I F C B. This trip is brought before you to inform you of the approval per that policy. Mr. Chair, I recommend formal approval.
All right, you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to formally approve the Northgate High School field trip. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I call on Mr. Keith Chapman to bring you a budget report and sales tax. Mr. Chapman?
Budget report, we are over slightly again for the month of March. We've completed seventy-five percent of the year, expended seventy-three-point-eight-nine percent of the budget. The items we're running into, we've seen an increase in our operating insurance, parts, supplies, fuel, those type of things. And as far as overall budget, we're fine, but those are throwing a little hiccup there. Sales tax, continue to see good collections there, just over two-point-nine million dollars, ten-point-one-three percent increase year-over-year.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Tonight, Dr. Geis is attending a meeting for me, so I will bring your staff and student attendance. For the seventh reporting period, the school with the highest staff attendance was Northside Elementary School. Schools with the highest student attendance were Arbor Springs Elementary, Blake Bass Middle, and Northgate High School, and the program with the highest student attendance was Central Educational Center. For the board goal report this month, I wanted to recap everyone on our recent whole-board training. On Wednesday, March twenty-first, excuse me, Tuesday, March twenty-first of twenty-twenty-three, all seven board members of the Cowee County School Board participated in whole-board training. Whole-board training was monitored by the Georgia School Boards Association Senior Board Development Specialist, Dr. Donna Hinton. During the training session, school board members concentrated on the implementation of the system's strategic plan, reviewed the school system's enrollment data, enrollment trends, and enrollment projections. By participating in the whole-board workshop, this continued to assist Cowee County School System's governance team and staff to remain focused on the core business of educating students in our system. Board members, one thing that I will mention, it had been several years since we had designed the training in that format for you, and I left that day more impressed than ever with the efforts of our staff and the work that they're doing within the system-level departments to meet our strategic plan performance objectives, and the data that they are tracking to ensure that we're going where you want us to go. So I appreciate their efforts and feel like it was a great training that day. So just wanted to update you, but also update the public on that this evening. Mr. Chair, the last thing I have for you is a facilities and construction report. You can see final closeout documents on Northgate. The addition, renovation, and modification are being reviewed by the architects, so that's one of the last steps in that project. Madras Middle and Winston-Dowdell Academy fire alarm replacement, installation of wiring between wings, and installation of exterior devices was completed at both locations last week. We anticipate, hopefully, delivery of those fire alarm panels out this summer. Still working on design on the softball field houses at East Coweeeta High, Northgate High School, and Noonan High School. Have more information on those for you in the next couple of months. And then, of course, Noonan High School, BP one, all demolitions complete, still working on some underground utility renovation in some areas that need to be relocated during school breaks. The gym, if you've been by there, what I call the front wall, we have brick on the front wall there, masonry walls, their installation is proceeding. Floor decking's installed on that second-level cheerleading and wrestling room, and we're starting to see a ton of progress there on that facility. If you've been by in the last few days, you will notice on the academic buildings, BP three, we have started to go vertical on that with steel. Floor slab has been poured on the lower level, and underground plumbing and electrical rough ends are proceeding. Everything is still scheduled, in spite of Mother Nature, to be completed in July of twenty-twenty-four. And I always look at Cory and Ronnie back there when I say that. He gives me the thumbs up, so we're still on track, even in spite of all the weather that we've seen. And with that, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Horton, and speaking of being on time, we're right at seven fifteen, so great job there. So we're moving to our public comments portion of the evening. I'm going to read the board policy, B C B I, public participation in board meetings prior to beginning. So in order to improve communication between the Board of Education and the citizens of Coweeeta County, the Board of Education encourages citizens to attend regularly-scheduled board meetings and speak on matters of general public education concerns. Forty-five minutes will be set aside for this purpose at each Board of Education meeting. To guarantee an orderly meeting and to ensure that as many people as possible have an opportunity to speak, the Board of Education has implemented the following rules regarding public comment. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. The Board of Education will listen to each presentation without comment. After the presentation is made, each board member may respond if he or she wants to or wishes to for a period no longer than one minute each. Only citizens of Coweeeta County or employees of the Coweeeta County School System may speak in the public comment portion of the meeting. No grievances will be heard concerning any specific personnel action or any specific county employee except through the grievance procedure set forth in the board's personnel policy. No one will be allowed to discuss any matter involving threatened or pending litigation with the Board of Education during the public comment portion of the meeting. In the need to preserve order in the meeting, no person attending the meeting will be allowed to boo, hiss, cheer, clap, or otherwise show approval or disapproval for any speaker in any manner whatsoever. No signs or placards advocating any action or position will be allowed at the meeting. No personal attacks on any person will be allowed. The chairman of the board, me, is responsible for enforcing these rules. No citizen or system employee will be retaliated against in any manner whatsoever for speaking on matters of public concern at the Board of Education meeting. Any person not recognized within the allotted time period for public comment will be rescheduled to speak at the next meeting. Request to speak during the public comment portion of a meeting must be received at the Board of Education office no later than three hours prior to that meeting being called to order. And with that, we have one public comment this evening, Jasmine Meehan.
Good evening. Due to the policy change to regulation I F A dash R, I understand that I, as a now regular tax-paying citizen of the county, can no longer officially challenge any literature or curriculum present in our county schools. However, I would like to share with you all two books that shockingly are in some of our elementary schools. For months last year, mostly during the election cycle, you all were adamant there were no such books present, and especially not in our elementary schools. The first book I have is called Drama by Reyna Teldemire. This book I rented from a local library to read. Our local public library deems this book for young adults, but our county's school library approves it for as young as five-to-seven-year-olds. There seems to be a disconnect somewhere. Now, this is not the worst of the worst, it is not obscene, which is what has mostly been brought to your attention. However, it does include sexual identity references multiple times throughout. It's written comic book style, so of course there's pictures to help the story along. This book is showing, per the county database, at Arncosargent Elementary, Glanton, it shows Lost at Welch, and it's available at most of the middle schools, and then we have Noonan High and Winston-Dowdell. The second book I brought is The Breakaways by Kathy G. Johnson, which includes obvious gender ideology that you also have stated is not present in our schools. There are graphics in this book as well, but this one does include two young girls in bed together for a sleepover. One admits to the other that she thinks she is a he, and then the two kiss. So being that this is a comic book-style literature, it shows two children kissing. Why is this on a school media shelf? And worse, why is this book available to elementary children? This one's available at Glanton, White Oak, Arnold Middle, Evans, and Lee Middle School. So I do have a copy of this book, I purchased this book, so if anybody would like to read it, please see me. And this is just an extreme disappointment that our media specialist purchased this book. And there are so many more I could share, I would think, though, at this point, y'all would be completing a full media audit. Summer, of course, would be a great time to do so, but why has that not already been done? Obscene materials and literature were brought to your attention back in November and October of twenty-twenty-one. A handful of books have and are being reconsidered, but the process seems to be dragging on. In case you are all not aware, there is a Marxist manifesto that exists. It is very old and easy to research. These Marxists created a list of forty-five things to accomplish. They can also be found in The Naked Communist by Kleon Skousen. And just so that it's understood, this is not make-believe or fairy tale. This manifesto was entered into congressional record January tenth of nineteen-sixty-three by a Florida representative. Here are just a few off that list that should be an eye-opener to what's happening in our country and the education system. Number fifteen, capture one or both of the political parties in the United States. Pretty sure that one has been completed. Number seventeen, get control of the schools. Use them as transmission belts for socialism and current communist propaganda. Soften the curriculum, get control if teachers' associations put the party line in textbooks. Number eighteen, gain control of all student newspapers. Number twenty, infiltrate the press. Get control of book review assignments, editorial writing, policymaking positions. Number twenty-four, eliminate all laws governing obscenity by calling them censorship and a violation of free speech and free press. Number twenty-five, break down cultural standards of morality by promoting pornography and obscenity in books, magazines, motion pictures, radio, and TV. Number twenty-six, present homosexuality, degeneracy, and promiscuity as normal, natural, and healthy. Number forty, discredit the family as an institution. Encourage promiscuity and easy divorce. Number forty-one, emphasize the need to raise children away from the negative influence of parents. Attribute prejudices, mental blocks, and retarding of children to suppressive influence of parents. There has been and is a precise plan that includes to destroy the family and pit children against their parents, as number forty-one has stated. The communist agenda does not work when families are unified and strong. When morals and values take precedence over the impact of outside forces, their plans fail. So we have, I mean, we see this happening all over the country, I'm running out of time, I have so much more to say, but we need to wake up. Everybody needs to research this stuff, and we all have a choice to stand up and be courageous and do something about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. There will not be any board comments... I'm sorry, on the public comment section, but we do appreciate everyone coming out to the board meeting. Moving over to board comments, are there any comments, Mr. Glover?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, just a real short comment to second what Dr. Horton said about the all-board training. It was great to spend the morning with the other six fellow board members, and I just wanted to publicly thank all the different people from the central office and the schools and the different departments that gave us a kind of a deep dive into their data and their day-to-day operations, and I think we heard everything from what special ed to buses to curriculum to, I know I'm leaving out some finance, personnel, all of it. So appreciate the work that I know went into that, and I got probably more out of that than, hadn't been on the board that long, but any other training that we have attended either here or at the different conferences. Now, those are not good, but this one was over the top, and thank you all very much for that.
Are there any other board comments? Thank you, Mr. Glover. Okay. Is there a motion to approve to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation?
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero.